Okay, we're ready to start?
Yes.
Okay, I brought my handy gavel here. I called to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on this Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. This regular city council meeting is conducted via telecommunications and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N-2920 issued by the Governor. The city council meeting is being livestreamed on Channel 26 and on our city's website and on YouTube. Members of the public will not be able to attend the meetings at the city council chambers physically, however, public comments can be accepted via email at clerks, C-L-E-R-K-S, office@campbellca.gov during the meeting and before the close of public comment on any item. Please note that the city cannot guarantee that the email sent during the meeting will be received by the close of the public comment. If you choose to mail your comments during the meeting, please indicate in the subject line "for public comment" and list the item number you wish to comment on. Comments will be read during the comment period for that item and will be subject to the two-minute time limitation, which is approximately 250 words. If you would like to submit an oral request or if there is any other item on the consent calendar that you wish to comment on, please send your email now and allow the city clerk time to receive them. Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman.
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee. Councilmember Resnikov.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Present. Okay, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, this is the part where we would potentially have special presentations and proclamations. At this point, we see none. Uh, communications and petitions, uh, we have no communications or petitions. Now, we are on to oral requests. This is the part of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. The law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking action on such item. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. City Clerk, I understand as we have an oral request.
That is correct.
Please read the oral request.
We have an oral request from Roberta Phillips. She writes, "In early April, Governor Gavin Newsom announced a new statewide program, Project Room Key, that would move homeless residents into hotel rooms to prevent the spread of COVID-19. On April 19th, Governor Newsom stood in the parking lot of the Motel 6 in Campbell and announced that the state was making available 5,025 rooms from the hotel chain alone. Whether or not these rooms are utilized is being left up to local jurisdictions. Mayor Susan Landry was photographed with Governor Newsom at this news conference. My questions for council are: One, how many of Campbell's homeless residents have been moved into hotel rooms? And two, how many rooms has Campbell acquired and where are they located? In the last few days, I have phoned the Motel 6 in Campbell and at four other nearby locations, I was told by all that they are not providing rooms to the homeless. I also phoned the chain's national reservation number and was told they have no information on which, if any, of their locations are involved in the project. Was all of this publicity and rhetoric related to the aforementioned press conference just a sham? Was the City of Campbell done, what has the City of Campbell done since the meeting with the Governor on April 19th? Please don't reply that the County of Santa Clara is in command of all Project Room Key services because understandably, their efforts mostly take place in San Jose, where the homeless population is concentrated. Homeless persons in a small city like Campbell fall through the cracks. Many of our homeless residents don't know how to access Project Room Key, nor do they have transportation to testing sites or other services, other service providers, most of which are far outside the immediate area. They are struggling to locate a service station where they are not refused use of the restroom. They can no longer go into a restaurant, the library, or a movie theater for a brief period of respite from the elements. Many don't have access to television or the internet. There are more than enough empty hotel rooms in the area to house all of Campbell's homeless population, including those who have thus far managed to escape infection from the virus. There is funding available from FEMA and from California's Emergency Homeless Aid Funds, as well as staff operational support available from the state. There are many caring and capable individuals and groups in Campbell who are willing to go out and do whatever is needed to locate and identify these vulnerable people and get them moved into rooms. The mayor and the city council have the power and responsibility to initiate and oversee the action that will house people quickly in order to save lives now and in the months ahead. Bobby Phillips."
Thank you, and I do have, uh, under Mayor announcements, I'll be able to provide some information regarding what was just said. So now, we're on to our council announcements. The City of Campbell continues to work closely with our partnering agencies to monitor how the coronavirus is impacting our communities. We are actively monitoring the information provided by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and reviewing guidance provided by the county's Public Health Department. We continue to take proactive steps to prioritize the health and safety of our employees and community members. Our focus is to maintain essential services and keep you informed. On Monday of this week, Dr. Sarah Cody announced a new update on our shelter-in-place order that allows non-essential retail businesses in the county to open for curbside pickup beginning on Friday. Also, the supply chain for these businesses, companies that manufacture the products they sell, will allow to reopen, provided they all comply with the social distancing guidelines. The updated order also permits car parades to take place, and outdoor museums, historical sites, and publicly accessible gardens can now reopen. Next is regarding Motel 6. So I was in, I've been in correspondence over the last couple of weeks with the county and the people that are operating the Motel 6. I can report that as of Sunday, um, they were starting to place people at the motel. I had made a special request that they go out into the creek and work with our police department to identify those people that have been in Campbell and not having a house to live in. I've been hap, I'm happy to say, as of today, the county has completed 15 placements per day and has filled 45 rooms at the Motel 6. There are 70 rooms in the whole, the total of the motel. The county and the state will be occupying 50 of them. One will be for staff office, so right now, they have filled 45 of the rooms. There's three left. And overall, in the state, they have placed 600 households in motels, FEMA trailers, and um, since March 13th, there are another 495 in shelters. The police department was given the emergency hotline number for people to call. They did go out, they did find people. One person on Sunday was placed in the hotel, and they are going out every day and reaching out to more individuals in Campbell, as well as the rest of the surrounding cities. The next is our Safe Park. The Safe Park program is to provide a safe place for people to sleep at night that are unhoused. This program rotates between several churches within the city and surrounding cities. Go to campbellministerialassociations@gmail.com if you need a place to park your car at night. 211. If you are in need of any assistance finding food, paying household bills, seeking available resources, or other essential call services, please either call 211 or go to 211.org. 211 is completely confidential and is accessible 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Testing. The County of Santa Clara directly provides pre, free COVID-19 testing through the Public Health Department and through Valley Medical Center hospitals and clinics, as well as through several drive-through testing locations throughout the county. To find a clinic or community testing site close to you and to make an appointment today, Additionally, the county is working on contact tracing. Thousands of Americans could soon join the ranks of disease directives in one of the most important battles against coronavirus. Contact tracing has helped slow or stop previous epidemics such as SARS and the Ebola outbreak. Santa Clara County is looking for case investigators with appropriate language abilities to reach out to the community. To request more information, please email contacttracing@ioc.sccgov.org. Next slide. California is expanding the Friendship Line California to support families and lonely, of those that may be lonely or isolated older Californians across the state. Friendship Line California provides emotional support to older Californians facing loneliness, ice and glation, or anxiety. The Friendship Line California is toll-free at 888-670-1360. Next one. CalFresh applications are being accepted over the phone for residents who need help buying food. Contact the Second Harvest Food Bank Connection Hotline at 800-984-3663. Next slide. The County of Santa Clara Library District has resources for students and families while distance learning. There are many online resources for students, including homework help, tutoring, test preparation, research tools, not to mention academic videos, articles, ebooks, and so much more. Please visit their website at sccld.org. Next slide. The City of Campbell will be closed on Monday, May 25th, in observance of Memorial Day. Limited essential services to the public will reopen on Tuesday, May 26th. The Campbell Police Department, along with other critical city services, will continue to provide emergency and essential services to the community. Please continue to visit the city's website at campbellca.gov for up-to-date information on COVID-19, adjusted city services, canceled events, police department services, the Campbell Community Center, and other business resources. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Uh, do we have items that anybody from the council or the public would like to pull? Uh, Liz?
Item is five, and I think you also wanted six.
Five and six. Okay, anybody else? Andrea, do you have anybody requesting to pull an item?
Not for consent.
No?
No, not for consent.
Okay, and then, um, I'm number eight. I'm pulling number eight. And also, I have to recuse myself from, um, number seven.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, I will be recusing on number eight.
Okay. Okay, so we have left on the consent calendar items one, two, three, four. Oh, I'm sorry, one more on item number one. Brian, you were gonna add in, um, the sentence in paragraph five.
We, we could just reflect in the motion, uh, with that amendment to include the follow-up items that were provided to the city manager.
Okay, so item one includes that, item two, three, four. And, um, we need to take that as a motion. Do we have a motion for one through four?
Hello.
Ann, move second.
Second is, is not seven, I'm sorry, I missed seven.
Right now, we're one through four.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman.
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee.
I, just to clarify, I didn't make the motion or second the motion.
Oh, who made the motion? Liz.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Resnikov.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye. Okay, then we go to number five, the early action planning, the LEAP grant application.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, uh, basically, two staff has, uh, in this, uh, application, uh, for $150,000 that we're hoping that the state doesn't take back, but there was also a question that I thought would be useful for the public. The, um, grant money is not just for the housing element update, it is for the RENA number update and changes to policies and procedures that need to be implemented prior to the housing element update. And, um, I just wanted to reiterate that there's a lot happening and that this application is very important for staff to have in this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year, uh, prior to the housing element.
Okay, do we have a motion then on five? Liz?
I'll make a motion, unless you want to have public comment.
Oh, yeah, do we need public comment? Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay.
I'll make, I move item five.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Waterman.
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye. Okay, item six, the TDA Article III grant application.
So, um, I'll speak to this, um, in my committee notes later on, but I just wanted to make note that there's a list of projects, um, in this, one of which is, um, for the Civic Center and Second, um, Street for, um, flashing beacon, I think, is the term. And, um, that solution, um, I spoke at the time, may not, um, satisfy the traffic problems. We're having cars drive through that intersection, and we need to find a solution that more than just pedestrian crossings at that location. So I, I understand that staff will come back to council when this money is allocated, um, at the appropriate time, so we can apply it to the right projects.
Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Waterman.
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye, and I have to recuse myself from item number seven for potential future conflict. So Liz, you want to, um, carry this item?
Thank you. Um, item seven is a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the contract of the Santa, uh, the County of Santa Clara to approve funding for additional emergency meals in fiscal year 1920 and to provide a senior nutrition program for fiscal year 2021 and approve a corresponding budget amendment in fiscal year 201920. I'm ready for a motion.
Ann, Rich?
Oh, move item seven.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Resnikov, second by Councilmember Bybee. Uh, I'll vote, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterman.
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons.
Aye.
That motion passes.
Okay, so then, we go to, um, item eight, and Paul is recusing himself for item eight.
I will mute and stop my video during this item.
Okay.
If I may, pardon the interruption, but apparently, the video, the video is working, but the sound is not working for the public.
Cecil!
Oh, Cecil, well.
More with it, I'll, I'll talk with Cecil directly.
Yeah, we are, we are, we are, good news, we are streaming live on, uh, on YouTube, so we head back up.
I just got a text saying that it wasn't working.
Which one, the channel, the live on the Campbell website or YouTube?
That I don't know.
Okay, uh, Cecil, you're looking into that?
Uh, I am, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna go to item eight, which is the authorization of the request for proposal for the environmental services. Um, and I had asked that this item be pulled from the agenda. I think it's too soon in the process. We don't know exactly what we're going to be doing for new building. We don't have specific locations, and I think at this point, we would be getting bids on the higher side with the uncertainty. So I have asked that if we pull this item, but that it does come back in the next several months. Any conversation or discussion? Liz?
I support that.
Okay, so the motion is, uh, we like, make a motion then, Liz?
Uh, we need to have a comment, our staff comment.
Do we have any comment, Andrea? Todd, I see Todd waving his hand at me.
There are no public comments.
Todd?
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure that I wasn't talking over the public. Um, so it, so I appreciate you bringing this item, uh, um, and identifying the issue. Uh, this is something that, that we felt needed to happen earlier in the process, you know, sooner rather than later, and I, and I do appreciate the comments that I've heard so far. We, we base our, our, uh, proposal of this on the California SEQA, California SEQA guidelines, and it's, in public projects, it's typical to involve environmental consultants early on. And I wanted to just read one of the, one of the, uh, items from Article One of the, of the SEQA guidelines. It says, "With public projects, at the earliest feasible time, project sponsors shall incorporate environmental considerations into project conceptualization, design, and planning." And so, we felt that we were being consistent with those guidelines because we do, what we know exactly where the library's going, and we did identify a quadrant of the block where the police building was going. So based on the knowledge that we had to that point, we felt that it was appropriate to move forward with this. Uh, you totally understand that if council elects to postpone this or ask that it come back later, but I wanted you to understand the rationale for staff bringing it forward at this point.
I thank you, and I appreciate the summary of the SEQA. I, I just think it's a little early. I do want environmental coordination early on, but we don't have a architect on board, we don't have anybody for them to talk to yet, so I felt at least one, two, or three months until we, um, want to get them started. Any other comments?
Motion? I would make a motion that the city council, uh, request staff to return, or authorize staff to return this item to the council agenda in the, um, July or August timeframe.
Second on the motion? See, no second? Okay, you want to take another stab at a motion, somebody?
Well, if, if that's the case, I will add a few more comments to why I supported what you have to say. Um, one of the things that's really, um, important in, um, the Measure O projects is to understand the full scope of the work, and, um, we need, as a public, to be prepared to, I'm gonna say, have a check and balance on how the money is being spent. And we have only the broadest terms of how, um, consultant funding is going to be spent on this, and we need to know, uh, we need to know more. So, um, the figure of $150,000 is a big chunk of money to, um, put out at this point, and to the mayor's point, that may be too high, um, depending on what the ultimate scope of the project is. So I think we need to have a more comprehensive overview, what we, um, to understanding what the whole project is before releasing individual contracts, um, at this point.
Any other comments, Rich or Ann? Rich, nothing? Ann, okay, so, uh, do we have another, an alternative mo, motion? We ain't getting any motion here, so I guess that item doesn't move forward, right? Brian?
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Oh, Ann, go ahead.
I make, I move that the city council adopt a resolution to authorize staff to issue a request for proposals, RFP, whoops, for, sorry. Um, for environmental consultant services for the Measure O Civic Center improvements and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute consultant services.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Waterman.
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov.
He's upstairs, or he's not on this one.
Uh, Vice Mayor Gibbons.
No.
Mayor Landry.
No. So there's no, uh, three vote on that motion does not pass? So, Brian, that means that comes back on the next agenda or a future agenda?
Yeah, we'll bring it back on a future agenda.
Okay. Next item, thank you, everybody. The next item is public hearings and introductions of ordinances. There are no agendized items. Now, we will go to item nine under unfinished business. This is the award of Measure O New Police Operations Building Design Service Contract with LPA Incorporated.
Excuse me, number nine is the J.D. Morgan Park?
No, number nine is award. Do I have my numbers wrong here? Oh, something's out of order here on my agenda.
Sorry, mine says nine is J.D. Morgan Park, whichever, I beg your pardon.
Mine also is J.D. Morgan.
Okay, so we'll go to number nine, J.D. Morgan Park. Let me start over. Uh, this is approval of the J.D. Morgan Park, the Bud Avenue Improvement Project Final Conceptual Plan. Um, if there's anybody who wishes to comment on this item, please submit your comments now to clerksoffice@campbellca.gov. Emails received prior to the close of the public comment period will be read for the record. We now have a, our presenters are the city engineer, Amy, and we have the consultant, Corbin Schneider of Verde Designs, will also be available to answer questions. So, uh, go ahead, Amy.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of city council. Um, I just need to make sure that I'm sharing the screen.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so this is item number nine, John D. Morgan Park, All-Inclusive Playground Project Final Conceptual Design. Uh, Cecil, are you controlling the screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we are here to seek council approval, um, of the final conceptual design. Hang on a second, I'm sorry, but Cecil, can I take control of the screen?
Unable to, I have, I'm had the slides up.
Oh, okay. All right, so, um, there are two conceptual design alternatives that we had brought to parks and recreation. there are two conceptual design alternatives that we had brought to Parks and Recreation in January and then also to the council for a study session back in February. And the comments that we received from both, we tried to incorporate, which guided us to the final conceptual design. I will share, I will go through that as part of this presentation. And I will go over briefly the budget and the schedule, and then we'll conclude with the Q and A session. And that's why we have Corbin Schneider here with me from Verde Design to help answer some of the questions. Next slide, please. All right, so what we heard from the PRC and council is that, you know, there's a preference for the conceptual alternative number one that was presented, and that's in the, with the fun in the forest theme, which is more of the vertical type of playground. And we were also asked to look at opportunities to incorporate its standalone kind of net climber, and then to look at separation between the youth area and the tot play area. And the other thing is, is there opportunities to provide some sort of separation of the sensory area from the rest of the playground? A couple of other comments that we also heard had to do, one with parking and how do we increase ADA stalls without sacrificing, you know, the standard parking? And then just recently, a couple of weeks ago, we went in front of the Parks and Rec Commission, where they gave us additional comments in regards to the existing tot play area. Next slide, please. Okay, so kind of want to walk through this with you. This is the conceptual alternative number one, which we are basing that for our final conceptual design. Can you see where my mouse is? I just want to make sure. No? Oh, because I don't have control, sorry, I apologize, I don't have control of the screen. But around the perimeter of the park, we have a fence that is a 48-inch tall fence that wraps around. And we have two gates. One is on the top, near the restroom area. Actually, two of them, they're right off of the parking lot off Bud. And then there is a third one that comes off the path from the existing pathway. Next, please, Cecil. Okay, and then so what's different with this, what we had changed as part of this final design is we looked at the net climber opportunity. And we found that by including its own net climber, that one is cost prohibitive, and two is that the footprint of it would be so large that then we would be sacrificing some other pieces of play equipment, which is something that we didn't want to do. So we talked to the manufacturer and found an opportunity to add a net climber feature onto the proposed three-story tower that's part of conception alternative number one. And that's where you see with the orange cloud, that's the net climber. Cecil, next slide, please. Next click, thank you. And so by incorporating this net climber, we're not losing any of the other play elements that were part of this tower. Click, please. Okay, and then we looked at the sensory play area. And what can we do to separate it from the rest of the playground? So the proposal here is to install a fence that's about 42 inches in height that wraps around the area with no gates. And what this does is that it kind of prevents the interference with, you know, maybe people hopping over the landscaping or the shrubs. And so there's somewhat of a separation, but it's not gated. Click, please. So that's a sensory area that I just talked about. The other thing from the council is that there were some concerns about the noise level and sound level that would be coming from this area. We talked to the manufacturer and the, the, the play equipment, the sound equipment, the loudest piece would probably be around 105 decibels if you're standing like 20 feet away from that piece. And if you stand away, 100 feet away, you're looking at probably 60 decibels. So what does that mean in reference? So 100 decibels is almost equivalent to maybe a loud lawnmower. A 60 decibel, that's equivalent to a conversation. Next, please, Cecil. All right, and then so what do we do in terms of providing some sort of separation between the, the tot area and the, can you click, please? The youth area and the tot area. So rather than providing another click, so rather than providing a, a physical separation, we looked at providing some sort of visual separation. And this is where we rotated or moved the rotating spinner more in the center to provide that separation so that parents or that, that are there with their children, two different age groups, they can see both, but there is somewhat of a separation without an actual barrier. Next. Okay, so with the existing tot play area, that was one of the areas we had talked about previously, where right now we have a tot play structure. But that structure is aged and it really doesn't meet current safety standards. So as we're doing this part, that's an area that we need to consider. So we are removing that. And previously, when we came to council, we had shared proposal of considering maybe some sort of stage, some sort of picnic tables, or, you know, with pavers. And it didn't seem like that was well received. So we took this back to the drawing board and, and looked at it and said, well, what can we do? And with all the other added amenities as part of this final design, it really gave us the understanding that we really can't add much to this without exceeding budget. So the solution here is that we would still have to demo the existing play structure, but we would treat the surface with mulch. Now, in doing that, we would then be creating a passive play area for this playground that we, I think, sort of lacked. And then so in doing this, we kind of accomplished that. At the latest Parks and Rec Commission meeting, the comments were made that rather than just leaving this area with mulch, is there something else that we can include, such as seating? And so we're gonna take that into consideration as we develop the final design. So we're hoping that, you know, based on the budget, we, we hope to include it. But if we cannot, at least, you know, we're prepping it for a future potential project. Next. Next. Okay, so let's not forget, you know, like all the other play elements that we had included as part of this, which was part of the conceptual alternative number one. And those are going to be retained as part of the final conceptual design. What you see here, though, are very bright color play equipment. So it really doesn't lend itself to fun in the forest. So when we move towards final design and construction, we definitely will be looking for pieces that are more in, more neutral tone so that it does follow that theme. There are certain pieces, though, that are blue, that will certainly remain blue because what we've learned is that blue is a very calming color for individuals with autism. Next, please. Parking is another, another element that we looked at as part of this final conceptual design. We had spoke previously about adding ADA parking spaces if we can, even though the, the site suitability study that we had done really indicated there is adequate ADA parking spaces. But nevertheless, we wanted to look for opportunities to add more. So on the top left picture, you see there, there are two trees and a planter box, planter area. And that's the area that we're looking for opportunities to add maybe three more parking spaces. Those two trees there, and talking to our arborist, and he did an inspection of those two trees and found that they are in poor health. So we're looking at this area then as a possibility for us to add additional ADA parking spaces, but it also means then we have to regrade. So looking at the entire, but it's important for us to look at the entire parking lot as a whole. We looked at the rest to see are there opportunities where we can maybe restripe the existing parking spaces so that we can add additional standard stalls, right? And what we found is that the way they're striped right now, they're really larger than it's needed. So by us restriping it, we would be gaining approximately five more standard parking spaces. Now, that's good, but unfortunately, that scope exceeds the scope of the all-inclusive playground grant that we've received, and it exceeds that budget. So our recommendation is that we would come back to council for a proposal for a future project to do this, this parking lot renovation to increase parking spaces, both for ADA and standard stalls. Next, please. Okay, so talking about budget, then, for this, we have a total of $2.1 million, which consists of $1 million from the county all-inclusive playground grant, which requires an equal match from local. So our total then is 2.1 million. Local batch, we're putting in 1.1 million dollars from the park dedication funds. The 2.1 million dollars, the breakdown consists of consultant services, city staff costs, as well, obviously, the construction budget, which is 1.57 million dollars. Over half of that is play equipment, we look for play equipment, and the rest is for site improvement and site preparation. Next, please. So where were we in terms of budget, in terms of schedule? Right now, we're in front of city council seeking for approval of the final conceptual design, which then enables us to start the final design process. And our hope is to bring a final set of plans ready for bid to council in September, where then we can begin construction in December of 2020 with completion in June of 2021, which gives us ample time for full project closeout by November 2021, which is a requirement of the grant agreement that we have with the county. Next. And just to, just to summarize, the recommendation from staff is for city council approval of the final conceptual design.
Thank you.
Next, Q and Q and A. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any council question, I'm sorry, does any council member have questions? I see none. City clerk, do we received any comments on this item?
We have not received any comments on this item.
Okay, so I'll bring this back to council.
Mayor Landry, excuse me?
Yes.
I have a question, I do have a question.
Okay.
I was just wondering, in listening to the staff presentation, was there any consideration given to some type of a sand play area in that tot area as a consideration instead of the mulch or a combination of it? It seems like sand features are somewhat of a popular item with kids. Just a question.
Does Verde or Todd want to take?
Council, council member, did I, did you say sand? I'm sorry, I only heard part of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, a sand, like a sandbox area, play area, sand, S-A-N-D.
Yeah, yes, yeah, okay, thank you. Sand is something that, it's a concern. Sand could be popular, but there are maintenance issues associated with sand. And so for, as part of this all-inclusive, it's not something that we had looked at. We're trying to stay within budget. We're also trying to find treatments that really minimizes the ongoing need for, for our staff to go out there to do further maintenance.
Hey, thank you.
Any other council questions? I have a quick question. The budget is 50,000 for staff design or manage, staff project management now and 50,000 during construction. Are we good on our budget to date for staff time?
Yes, we are, mayor. The way this grant works, it's a little tricky in that initially, the $2 million budget, the county wants all that money to be relegated towards the project, the consultant design and for construction. And so that didn't leave anything for staff budget. So we actually had come to council to ask for that 100,000. And right now, we are monitoring that, and I, we are keeping to budget.
And the 100,000 is both this level of, this phase of design and the drawings, and then the other part is during inspection and construction, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't see anybody else raising their hand. I want to thank Corbin and Verde Design. I think you guys have done a great job. You provided us with a lot of information and got us to making decisions very quickly. I am very happy with the final design. I still would like us in the future to evaluate having an all-inclusive bathroom. I think you worded in the report as an ADA. I think this is gonna end up being important. So if we do come back to say something like, look at the parking, that then I would want to see if we can look at that bathroom. But I understand we're trying to stay on track right now, and that's not in our scope of work. Unless anybody else has a comment, I'll entertain a motion. Paul? Rich?
I'll make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution to approve the final conceptual design for the John D. Morgan Bud Avenue Improvement Project 18-PP.
Second. Second.
So I think Paul chimed in first on the second. Roll call, please.
Council member Waterman.
Aye.
Council member Bibi.
Aye.
Council member Resnikov.
Aye.
Vice mayor Gibbons.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye. Thank you, Amy, Todd, and Corbin. Thank you very much. That item passes. We look forward to breaking ground.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to number 10, which is Measure O.
I will recuse on that item because of the proximity of my house to the project site.
Okay, so you're gonna turn, tune out?
Hello, mayor. Oh, sorry.
Hang on, real quick. The Measure O is the new police operation building design service contract to LPA Incorporated and to authorize the city manager to execute a consultant service amount, agreement in the contract amount not to exceed $980,835 and approve a corresponding budget amendment for fiscal year 1920. Go ahead, Ujay. Oh, and welcome to Jerry, Jeremy Hart, the director for LPA, and Ujay, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council members. Yes, this agenda item is for the Measure O New Police Operations Building Design Services Contract. Let's see, I'm gonna actually try to get my slides up here. Okay. So staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to award the police building design services to LPA Inc., authorize the city manager to execute a consultant services agreement in an amount not to exceed $980,835, and approve the necessary FY 2019, 2020 budget amendment under a Measure O account for the contract amount. For public members who may not be familiar with Measure O, Measure O was approved by the Campbell voters during the 2018 general elections, allowing the city to issue up to $50 million in general obligation bonds to fund the design and construction of city facilities to house the police and library services. The Campbell Police Department is located on the first level of City Hall. The City Hall was built in the early 1970s, and it does not meet the current requirements for an essential services building for immediate occupancy as cur, as currently required to house public safety and emergency services. The existing Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, is located on the first level of the Campbell Library. The library was also not constructed to essential services building standards. As part of the Measure O program, the plan is to build a new police operations building, incorporating an EOC and 911 dispatch center that meets or exceeds current standards. Staff worked closely with the RFP Subcommittee established by the city council to finalize the proposed design scope of services and the RFP. and the RFP for the new police operations building. The proposed scope includes services to conduct a feasibility study and complete design development, or, um, it's called a 30% design document. At the 30% design level, the city would make a decision on which delivery, project delivery method, um, to go with, um, as directed by the city council.
Hang on a second, Ujay, do you have other slides?
Um, actually, this is, uh, I think this is the, um, yeah, um, uh, I think I've almost done with this slide.
I don't know if you had the slides being shown. Go ahead.
Um, I'm just describing the RFP that was issued. Um, so it's still kind of the background, but, uh, maybe, uh, of relevance here, so I'll continue. So, um, depending on the project delivery method, the contract with the designer will be amended to include either bridging documents for design build services, or to complete 100% design and construction documents for the traditional design bid build delivery method. So on February 4th, the city council authorized the issuance of the RFP. And we'll go to the next slide here. The RFP was the issued on February 6th. It was posted on the city's website and questcdn.com. The, uh, RFP was also distributed to the Bay Area local chapters of the American Institute of Architects. The mandatory pre-proposal meeting was, um, held on February 19th, and 12 prime architectural firms attended. On March 9th, the city clerk received five proposals for the project. The police chief, the director of Public Works, um, police captain, and I evaluated all the proposals, and, uh, all five firms were, um, looked to be well qualified based on the review of the proposals, and we decided to interview all five firms. And, um, after, uh, the interviews were actually conducted over Zoom, and after all the interviews, the staff unanimously selected LPA in partnership with, uh, McLaren Wilson Laurie Architects, also known as MWL. They were deemed to be most qualified design team for the project due to their unquestionable expertise in law enforcement and public safety projects, and their experience working with public agencies. So, uh, at this time, uh, please allow me to introduce Jeremy Hart, the, uh, design director at LPA. And, uh, I'd like to invite him to say a few words about LPA and the design team that'll be involved in the project. Jeremy?
Thank you, Ujay. Madam Mayor and council, thank you for having us here today. Uh, it's our pleasure to, um, come before you, uh, about your project that you have in front of you. Uh, LPA is a, um, firm that is in our 55th year of operation. Uh, we have completed, uh, well over 250 projects for public agencies across California and within the state of Texas. Uh, and for this project, we have partnered with, uh, as Ujay alluded to, MWL, McLaren Wilson Laurie. They are a nationally recognized public safety, uh, programming and design consultant that has, um, got close to 300 projects, uh, to their credit in all 50 states and, uh, all Canadian provinces. They are, um, very well-renowned and an excellent partner that we are thrilled to have as a part of our team for this project. Uh, and additionally, uh, MWL has 10 recent projects, uh, that they have worked on in the Bay Area. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so our project team, uh, comprised of Patrick McClintock, who is the principal in charge and the director of our San Jose office, uh, where we will be servicing this project, uh, from our San Jose office. Patrick will provide, uh, leadership and overall project oversight. I am the, uh, lead design architect for the project. Um, you will become very familiar with, uh, myself as we work through the design process, as well as Kate Conley, uh, an architect, uh, as well, who will be the project manager in your single point of contact, uh, leading us to the process. The rest of the, uh, design and engineering services you see listed here in our, um, organization chart, uh, are all, all LPA employees. Something unique to LPA is we are an integrated design firm. Uh, the interior designers, landscape architects, structural engineers, mechanical engineers. Uh, we, we all, um, are under one umbrella, uh, in-house at LPA. And to, as, to augment our services, um, as we touched on, we brought in MWL to bring in their public safety expertise. Um, and then finally, um, as we move through the process, we have brought in an independent third-party cost estimator so that, um, we are getting, uh, an independent look at the, the project costs as we move forward with the project.
Great, uh, thank you, Jeremy. Jeremy will be available to answer any questions later, if you have any. Um, let's go to the next slide for consultant services agreement. Uh, the design, uh, scope of services for the consultant services agreement aligns with the scope defined in the RFP for the, uh, for the feasibility study and, uh, 30% design documents. The co, uh, contract amount of $988,835 was negotiated, which is approximately 5% of the new police building budget, and within the cost range anticipated by staff for the scope of services. Here is a slide on the budget strategy. This was, uh, shared with the council members back in February. I'm sharing here again, um, and I'll go over it, over it quickly. Um, the, uh, out of the $50 million Measure O budget, 20 million is currently set aside for the design and construction of the new police building. Another 20 million is set aside for the library project, and the remaining 10 million is for, uh, share costs for project and construction management costs, share studies, uh, shared site improvements, bond-related fees, uh, general contingency, and, uh, possibly for police site improvements as well. The city will need to, just as a note, the city will need to fund the furnishing fixture and equipment, FFNE, for the new police building separately, since the Measure O proceeds cannot be used for FFNE. Here is a slide on the police budget. Uh, this was not included in the agenda report, but, um, there was some interest in seeing what the, uh, the breakdown of the budget is. So this is what was, um, uh, this is being presented to the council today. So, let's see here. As discussed, the 30% design services would cost around $1 million. If the, if the design bid build delivery method is chosen, it will cost another $1.3 million to complete the full design services up to, uh, construction support services from LPA. Uh, the permit fees and other pre-construction items would cost around 500,000. The special inspections, 300,000, and that will leave us with 1.4 million for building construction and about 1.5 million for that construction contingency. Um, and, um, let's see here. Uh, with the new police building, there will be, uh, significant costs, costs related to site improvements, um, as much as 2 million or so, roughly speaking. Uh, that would need to come from the share budget, uh, of 10 million, and, uh, this information, and this is again, like, just a strategy moving forward, but it could be further refined as we work through the design and cost estimates. And, uh, the current strategy also includes a reserve, uh, for about 2.5 million of the share budget for the improvements to the existing police facility. There was also some interest in seeing the cash flow or an expenditure, expenditure schedule for the project, and, uh, that should be presented to the council at a future date, uh, with the discussion regarding the Measure O bond sales. Uh, that report will detail and highlight the cash flow and the appropriate timing and amounts for the bond sales working with the, um, city's financial advisor. For the project timeline, um, if the council approves the award of the design contract, the design services can start as early as June, as soon as the, um, the contract is executed. Soon after that, the design team will confirm program and space needs by fall of 2020 or earlier. Uh, concept designs are anticipated to be completed and presented to council by late 2020. And once a preferred concept option is approved, the design team will complete schematic design and design development documents by summer 2021. Both will be presented to council for approvals. And, uh, once the design development, uh, has been completed, at that point, we're hoping the environmental process and the declaration will be completed as well so that we can move forward with, uh, the construction documents. Um, so depending on whether we go with design bid build, delivery method, or design build, uh, these timelines will be followed as shown here. Um, but in either case, the construction should start no later than summer of 2022 and be completed by end of 2023 or early 2024. The recap on the recommendation and items for city council consideration is, uh, authori, is awarding the design contract to LPA and authorizing the city manager to execute the consultant services agreement and approving necessary budget amendments for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 for Measure O. Um, that concludes, uh, our presentation, and, uh, we're available for any questions you have.
Okay. Um, I can't see who's waving hands or anything. Can we take the slide down on the Q and A so I can see on my screen people raising hands? Cecil? There we go. How exciting! You guys were making progress! Yay, we're moving forward, I'm so happy. I did want to hear from Gary. Want to chime in a little for us? Put some enthusiasm in this?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm very excited right there with you. This has been a, a long time coming. Um, the process to get where we are today has, uh, been interesting, but I'm also very happy with, uh, with LPA and their ability to help us get, get the building and the facility that the police department needs, so. Farther along, and, uh, I'm looking forward to, to working with all you.
Great, and welcome Jeremy Ha, Hart to our Team Campbell here. We're looking forward to working with you. Does, uh, council have any questions? Or staff? I don't see any. Uh, city clerk, do we have any comments received for this item?
We have received, uh, comments for this item. Sergeant White has submitted, uh, comments on behalf of the Campbell Police Officers Association. And this is what it reads. "The last time I spoke in front of you, there were comments from council regarding the identified needs and changes to the police department that occurred shortly after 9/11, and thoughts as that relates to Measure O. Those comments seem particularly precedent today. As a council, it is upon you to ensure essential services for our community into the future, and if nothing else, this pandemic has highlighted what services are truly essential. The likelihood is that we have not experienced our last act of terrorism in this country. This most likely will not be our last pandemic, and there will most certainly be a natural disaster in our future. The brave men and women of the Campbell Police Officers Association will be called into service in our most trying times, and it is with complete confidence that we know they will show up. In the same way that law enforcement has changed significantly in the last 30 years, so has the way that people obtain information. We are talking about building public safety infrastructure that will need to last 40 to 50 years. I am left wondering if it would be prudent to invest so much of the finite resources available to the projects to completely overhaul and renovate a city building for the county library to lease. When technology is trending away from physical libraries, and will only continue to do so as technology advances and information on demand becomes the reality of the public library system. It is unclear at this time when people will even be able to meet in groups or share books again. Distance learning and video meetings is most likely the reality of our future post-COVID-19. What is clear is that regardless of the emergency of the day, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days per year, a Campbell PD dispatcher will answer your 911 call, and our officers will respond to your emergency and provide you with the outstanding police services that our department has become known for. The investments in city services should be made with an eye towards the future. It is the opinion of the Police Officers Association that splitting this money down the middle while politically expedient would not ultimately accomplish the goals of funding the type of police department that will be needed to support our members into the future. Tough decisions will need to be made along the way, and I would ask that as funding becomes an issue, which it most certainly will with these types of projects, and even if this current emergency is distant in our rearview, that you not forget the next emergency is likely around the corner, and that our members will again be asked to make personal sacrifice as they will most certainly show up in our community's time of need."
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Um. Yes, it looks like I just had one pop up. Uh, this comment is from Jeffrey Christina, and it reads, "As a reminder to the city council, there's no limit on the amount of money for the police station. The new building needs to meet the PD's needs. If, if they more, if they need more or less is irrelevant. The new building has to suit their needs legally." That was the language, language in the ballot measure.
Any other comments?
We have no other comments.
Okay, I'll return it back to council. Do we have any discussion? Liz?
So, uh, thank you. Um, uh, first of all, I congratulate staff and the, um, consultants, uh, for managing, um, I'm, at least, I'm sure not too many of you have done Zoom interviews before, so, very well done. So I'm excited to have, um, all of you selected. I do have a couple of, um, questions. Um, and they all boil down to, um, the one thing. I thought the J.D. Morgan Park that we just reviewed was very well-done because it had the full scope of the work, the full schedule, um, the full, the tracking of the money spent to date. Um, and it was very comfortable for me, and I'm sure others, to know exactly where we stand and where we're going and where we're going to end up. So on this particular, um, Measure O, uh, project, we don't really have that level of information. And when you look at your fee, and just, just to be, uh, use as an example, the 30% fee is roughly $1 million, and that would equate to $3 million total, not, uh, 2.3 or so. It's not that I dispute that you feel you need that money upfront, different services and different percentages, but, um, council as a whole doesn't have this, as asked for in the past, this master schedule, this Gantt chart of all the components, of all the money that's been spent, all the money that's going to be spent. And there was a reference in staff presentation about the building being finished, construction being finished, but it was also a reference to FFNE, this time required to actually move in. There has to be, um, an understanding of all the equipment that PD needs, much as the, um, surgeons, uh, indicated. You need to make sure we have all the right equipment. So I'm, um, I'm happy with going forward and looking at, um, all of the work and experience and selection process. Um, welcome. Uh, I'm nervous about the money and schedule, so, um, I, when the kind comes to make a motion, um, I'll have a few comments, um, on that. Oh, and one other thing, um, just as an FYI, I've mentioned this to the city manager. I don't think, um, Ujay knows this yet. The Silicon Valley Clean Energy is going to be giving about $150,000 to the city for, uh, resiliency, uh, planning, and it's the kind of money that might be well-used in the, um, for, um, resiliency design. Could be solar panels and battery backup, or who knows what. Um, but that's a nice little extra treat that might be appropriate when the time comes and council authorizes it to go to PD.
Okay. Rich, do you have any comments?
Not really, I mean, I keep, keep hearing about all this money that SVC is throwing away presumably free. I'd be kind of interested to know where that's coming from. Thank you.
Uh, council member Bybee?
Just, uh, welcome to the LPA design team. Looking
Looking forward to working with you.
Great. I have one clarification. Let's see, where's my note here? It's on page 163 of the total package. It's under the scope of services. Task A, number one, the kickoff meeting. It lists decision makers, but it doesn't list the decision makers or the city council. And I think it's extremely important that the kickoff meeting, that the consultant and staff come to council in a study session and ask for our initial feedback before we start moving too far into the process. So decision makers equal council. If no one else has any comments, I'll take a motion.
I'd make a motion. And I'll read it. "That the city council award the Measure O New Police Operations Building Design Services Contract to LPA Incorporated, authorizing the city manager to execute a consultant services agreement in a contract amount not to exceed $980,835 and approve a corresponding budget amendment in fiscal year 2019-2020", with the additional language that says, "Staff is to provide a master schedule for all components of the Measure O projects, not just the bond funds, all the projects, from inception to move-in, including projected staffing, council decision points, temporary relocations, financial obligations, bond schedule, and public hearings." And I would request, as part of the motion, that that be sooner than August when the bonds go out, but if that needs to be August, I'm uncomfortable. So we need to have that document sooner rather than later.
Rich?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I guess somebody could second, but it won't be me. Before we would add something like that, I would like to see a full analysis by staff on what that will take, what that will do to the whole schedule, what that will do to the budget.
Okay, so the staff would be doing this anyways?
What is it? Why are we adding this?
Well, so from my understanding of the motion, staff would do this anyways. It's just Liz is asking for it to be done sooner than later, right?
Yes, and it's been asked for by council back in February as well. So it's not as if this is anything new, and staff would normally be doing it anyway. I had expected to see it as part of this package. It isn't. So I'm just saying that it needs to be incorporated. Staff may, which I appreciate, staff did a good presentation and put a lot of data down. But that is not final. That's not the full picture. And we, I mean, basically, we have the responsibility to understand the whole scope of the project and make sure we don't run out of money in the end. I mean, that's where it boils down to. Wu-Jay mentioned that the FF and E needs to be funded separately. We don't know how that's going to be funded. We don't know, you know, where that fits into the schedule. There's lead time for getting the equipment for the PD to get them the right stuff they need. There's public hearings and lead time to get into planning commission and council meetings. There's a lot of things that need to come together, and our staff is obviously well aware of it. They just need to put it into some normal project format that allows the council to have a clear fiduciary responsibility of what's happening, where and when. So at any time, we know what we're doing.
Okay.
But it depends.
Hang on a second. We weren't supposed to discuss until we had a second on the motion. Do we have a second on Liz's motion? I don't see a second here, Liz. Ann?
Are you willing to pass the gavel?
If we don't get a second right now, I don't know how we're going to get three votes.
Well, I mean, I'm willing to even second. I just, you're asking for a lot without some analysis of it. I don't, you say council needs it, but.
Staff needs, it's normal. It's normal, Rich, honestly. It's normal.
For a council, I've watched a lot.
I'm going to chime in here, you guys. I'm going to chime in. Todd, can you chime in? So my understanding of what has been stated in the past and now today, there needs to be this overall comprehensive schedule and budget, and the budget of like FF and E and things that are not itemized right now. So the request has been, do we get that sooner than later? So Todd?
Please help. Yes, so that will be coming to you, you know, and with all due respect to the vice mayor, that will be coming to you whether it's included in the motion or not. If council's more comfortable with it in the motion, that's absolutely fine. And looking at where we are in terms of the other work that we have in front of us, I think that bringing that to council would be realistic. Probably in July. I think that June might be challenging, to be quite honest. But certainly sooner than August. I hear that concern. The part where I might be a little tentative on is I think some of the detail that I hear being discussed, we might not know that at the level being requested, but I think we could certainly bring the higher-level budgetary plan, the higher-level schedule, and then have more of a dialogue with council. So if council needs more details on any particular item, we could certainly follow up on that. But I do think that it would be perfectly appropriate for us to bring that all to you, and I think we would want to include things even beyond what was suggested today about, I think Wu-Jay actually touched on the notion of including the cash flow so that council will have a better understanding of the timing of the bond sales to be included in this as well. So I think you'll want the whole picture, but I don't know that we can get, you know, as you project further out, things become a little bit less certain, but we will certainly bring you the most complete information that we can bring you at that point, if that's acceptable.
That's exactly why you want to have it, because it is uncertain. So you can always figure out where you're at.
Okay, so we have a motion, Rich. You seconded the motion.
No, I did not. I said, I'm agreeing. It all gets down to what level of detail the council needs to move on with this and make a decision. And I certainly don't need that level of detail. In fact, I think it's dangerous for us to tread into that right now.
So do you have an alternative motion?
Well, I mean, I'm pretty happy with the motion as is.
So the motion that's printed in the agenda under recommended action?
Yeah, I don't know if you want me to read it.
Was that a motion?
Let me just say as print? Yeah.
There's a little lag here, so. Do we have a second on Rich's motion? Ann or Liz?
I'll second the motion, and it's based on what Public Works Director Caperso just said, that he doesn't feel that we need to put in a motion to have the information brought back. I believe that they will bring it back at a high level. I don't know that we need all the little nitty-gritty details about when public hearings are going to happen because at this point in time, it's hard to predict that. Our schedule has been in flux with the pandemic and so forth. If the July timeframe works for staff, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, so then we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Before the roll call, I just want to make sure it's clear what motion was seconded, because it wasn't to me.
Okay, so can you hear me all right? Let me just read it. The city council adopt, let's see, we're talking about number 10, right? To award the new police operations building design services contract to LPA Inc., authorize city manager execute a consultant services agreement in a contract amount not to exceed $980,835. And approve a corresponding budget amendment in account 448.518.7430. Sounds like a phone number, in fiscal year 2019 to 2020.
And Ann, is a second on that? Yes, okay, now roll call vote.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. That motion passes. Woo-hoo, you guys. How exciting. We're moving forward. Yay, guys. Great job. Now Bill questioned, can Paul now come back in? Or does he have to recuse for the library also now that there are two projects?
Yeah, actually, am I muted or not?
We can hear you.
Okay, he can come back in now. The library is actually on a separate parcel that is further away from his home.
Okay. Ryan, are you going to let Paul know to come back in now for the next item?
I'm in.
Oh, there you go. How are you doing? Okay, so now we're on to item number 11, which is the award of Measure O for the library.
It's me again. So for this item, for the Measure O Campbell Library Improvement Design Services Contract, we have Abraham Jason from Jason Architecture, and also Katie Stewart from Jason Architecture. We also have Jennifer Weeks from the County Library District joining us as well. For this item, the staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution to award the library design services to Jason Architecture, authorize the city manager to execute a consultant services agreement in an amount not to exceed $1,704,210, and approve the necessary FY 2019-2020 budget amendment under a Measure O count for the contract amount. So for the background, Campbell Library was constructed in the early 1970s and is subject to building systems failures and is in need of a major upgrade to address outdated building components, deficiencies, energy efficiency, and to meet the spatial needs for the library programs. Staff worked closely, again with the RFP Subcommittee, to finalize the RFP, and the city council authorized the issuance of the RFP at the February 4th city council meeting. The RFP was issued on February 6th, a mandatory pre-proposal site tour was held on February 18th, and 16 prime architectural firms attended. On March 8th, the city clerk received five proposals for the project. The proposals were reviewed by the Director of Public Works, the Acting County Librarian, the Library and District Finance Manager, and myself. The evaluation team shortlisted three firms to interview via Zoom, and Jason Architecture was one of the firms that was selected. Oh, sorry, was one of the firms I was interviewed. And after the interviews, the evaluators unanimously selected Jason Architecture as the most qualified designer due to their in-depth understanding of the project and their expertise and experience in library projects. So I would like to, at this time, I'd like to thank Jennifer Weeks and Chuck Griffith of the County Library District, our partners in the project, all their hard work during the COVID-19 pandemic to assist the city select a design consultant for the project. And at this time as well, I'd like to introduce Abraham Jason, the principal architect of Jason Architecture, and ask him to introduce himself and the firm and the design team that will be involved in the project.
Thank you, Wu-Jay. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us here tonight. We are thrilled to be discussing the rejuvenation of your library. Jason Architecture is a firm that is focused on the design of community and civic spaces. In particular, we have a particular expertise in the design of public libraries. I have worked on many facilities throughout the Bay Area. In particular, I've worked on the Los Catos Library and the Half Moon Bay Library. Jason Architecture is currently working for the Santa Cruz Public Library System on six library projects, both for the county and for the city of Santa Cruz. So we're working with your neighbors as well. We are excited to be here, and we take great pride and feel very honored to get to work on library facilities that serve the public. And Wu-Jay, you can go to the next slide so I can introduce the team. In addition to us as prime architect, we have a great consultant team, all who bring expertise to this project. MAC5 is our cost estimator. They will not only be doing cost estimation, but the project cost model. So they will be sort of forming the umbrella cost for soft costs, including the FF and E component, technology component, contingencies, et cetera, so we can get a good picture. We have worked with them on many projects in the Bay Area, and they have a good sense of the ever-changing and challenging Bay Area cost market. Cleary is our geotechnical engineer. They will essentially support the structural engineer depending on the requirements for seismic renovation. BKF is our civil engineer. JLJA is our landscape architect. Base Design is our structural engineer. They have a particular expertise in the renovation and seismic upgrade of aging facilities. We've worked with them on many projects like this, and they are a really good fit for this project. Alter is our mechanical and plumbing engineer. They, as well as Regia, our electrical engineer, are firms that we really like working with. They have an expertise in sustainable design, and we've actually worked on several zero-net energy buildings with the members of these firms. HYT is our fire protection engineer, and Red Car is our commissioning agent, which is required under the California Building Code for this project. So altogether, we've got a great team with a really specific expertise throughout the team in the design of not only public facilities, but public libraries in the Bay Area. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Abraham. So the design scope that's in the, the design scope for the public services agreement directly aligns with the scope that's defined in the RFP. That was developed with the help of the RFP Subcommittee. One change that was made to the scope is increasing the number of options to look at for the library design mainly related to the main public entry system. So instead of looking at just two options, we decided to look at three options. And this was necessary to investigate all the necessary feasible options specifically for the main entry area, which is a priority for the library. Furthermore, an additional services allowance of $120,000 is included as a placeholder in the contract for the design services that could be used for design services related to the temporary library facility and for other studies as directed by the city. The temporary library will need to be set up before the start of the library renovation to relocate the services. The library district will assist with the necessary relocation services, storage, FF and Es needed for the temporary library. But they're relying on the city to provide the necessary design and construction services for the temporary library as well. The design contract amount of $1,704,201 is about 8.5% of the library budget. This amount is reasonable for the scope being provided and is within the cost range anticipated by staff. Here is the budget strategy again that I shared for the previous item. So I'll just quickly go over it. Again, this is just a strategy which needs to be refined and eventually down the line as the estimates are more developed to be detailed out and to be approved by council. So the $50 million Measure O budget, we have $20 million for the library budget for the design and construction, temporary relocations and pre-construction items and contingencies, and $20 million for the police, and $10 million share budget for the other costs related to project management, construction management, bond fees, general contingency, and so forth. And again, for the library project, the FF and E will be funded by our partners at the County Library District. The library budget, this slide was, this information on this slide is not in the agenda item, but. but the staff felt that would be good to share with the council members. The, it's a breakdown of the 20 million library budget. As we've been discussing, there's 1.7 million for the full design services. Staff is anticipating up to 1.5 million for temporary library cost and 500,000 for permits and pre-construction items, 200,000 for special inspection, which leaves us with 14.6 million for construction with about 1.5 million for the construction contingency. For the project timeline, once the council approves the design services contract, we could start the design services as early as June, again, as soon as the contract is executed. The design team will confirm program and space needs by fall 2020 or earlier. The concept designs are anticipated to be completed and presented to council by late 2020. Once the preferred concept option is approved, the design team will complete the schematic design and design development drawings by summer 2021 and both will be presented to council for approval as well. And after, or probably with the schematic design, the staff will present the library, a detailed library project budget for council review and approval as well, and that will be in spring of 2021. The construction documents and building permits will be completed by late 2021, which will also be, which will also require approval from council to be issued for bid. The timeline for the construction documents may depend on how soon we could get the environmental clearance or the environmental declaration for the project as well. The, the environmental process, we have to look at as a whole Measure O program and that's the item that I guess we'll bring back to council so that we could issue an RFP for that service. The start of construction is anticipated for spring of 2022 and construction completion is 2023. The one thing that I don't show here is the schedule on the temporary library facility, but that will need to be worked out with the library district to figure out their needs and for us to agree on the location and to move forward with that. And any, anything related to the temporary library facility that involves costs will bring it back to council for approval as well. That concludes my, the presentation here and myself, Abraham, and Jennifer Weeks from the library district will be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, can we go back to where I can see everybody's face instead of the slides? Cecil? Oh, there we go, there's everybody. Great, yay, another one, we're moving forward, hooray, hooray. Is, do we have any comments that either Jennifer or Chuck or Peggy want to make from the library?
Well, thank you so very much. Having worked in this building and really been through this process, the district is absolutely thrilled that we are being, working in partnership with you to really serve your community. As you all know, it's lifelong learning is the mission of the public library. And so we're so happy that we're able to work together toward this very ambitious but wonderful goal. I, we were very, very impressed with Jason Architecture, with their depth of experience, with their innovative ideas and their knowledge of the libraries and of public libraries. So thank you so much. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. Chuck is here as our financial expertise. But again, this is absolutely a coordinated effort and we're very excited about it.
Great, we are too. Welcome aboard to the Campbell family. Katie and, sorry, Abraham. At this point, do we have any questions from council members? I see none. City clerk, do we have any comments received?
We have not received any comments under this item.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. Rich? That's Ann? Liz? You're on mute, Liz. Paul, I'm sorry, I forgot Paul, wait, you got Paul in there. Paul, you got any comments?
No, I'm good.
Okay, now Liz.
Thank you. Welcome as well, it's exciting. Thank you for the additional information, Wu-Jae, and congratulations again to getting through the Zoom presentation. I greatly admire anyone who did that. So I think that the staff will help us with the big picture so council knows where the project stands throughout its duration. I would make a motion that the City Council adopt a resolution to award Measure O Campbell Library Improvements Design Services Contract to Jason Architecture, authorize the city manager to execute a consultant services agreement in a contract amount not to exceed $1,704,210 and approve a corresponding budget amendment in account 448.8.518.7430 in fiscal year 2019-2020.
Second?
I'll second.
Ann? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
He said aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye.
What an exciting night, I have to say. This is so great. Staff, thank you for all your hard work, Wu-Jae, Todd. Thank you to all the consultants that have been here tonight with us. This is a wonderful step forward. We've been waiting for this for quite a long time and we're moving forward. Great, thank you all. Okay, now we're going to move on to new business. This is the designation of the newspaper to publish required legal advertising for the city of Campbell, and I think this is Bill?
Actually, Madam Mayor, I'll introduce it.
I'm sorry, Brian.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, member of the council.
Oh, wait, hang on real quick, Brian. If anybody wishes to comment on this item, please submit your comments now to the city clerks at ClerksOfficeCampbell.ca.gov. Okay, now you can go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This effort was a collaboration between my department, the City Clerk's Office, and the City Attorney's Office. So I'll introduce the item, but certainly available to help answer questions from a legal perspective. Bill Seligman, our city attorney, and Andrea Saunders, Deputy Acting City Clerk, would be able to answer some of the questions you may have. This item kind of germinated back in late March. On March 19th, it became apparent that the newspaper the city uses to publish our legal notices stopped publishing. And as the court describes, there is a requirement in California code that requires that the cities not just publish in any newspaper, that the newspapers that we choose to publish legal notices in meet some legal requirement and is quote-unquote adjudicated by the court system to meet the requirements that would be the minimum to post legal notices. The Campbell Express newspaper has been the newspaper the city has used for the last 30 years. And so it was not easy for us to, to want to jump ship and move to a different newspaper. But because they are no longer publishing, if the city is going to continue to pursue public hearings and continue to conduct regular business items, we are required to consider an alternative. It isn't an alternative to not do items. And so this item's before you tonight to consider that alternative. The city attorney has filed required paperwork with the court system to unadjudicate the Campbell Express and we have received a temporary order of the court that would allow us to move forward with this action tonight, and that is to designate another newspaper of general circulation. The resolution before you tonight recommends that we designate the Metro newspaper as a newspaper of general circulation. It would not commit the, the city to publish all notices in that newspaper. The city would still be permitted to publish, as is allowed by law, in free public places instead of publishing in the newspaper. The municipal, or the Campbell Code and the state code that regulates our actions and our discussion of these public hearings differs depending on topic of whether or not the notice has to be published in three places and whether that's sufficient or the notice rises to the level to have to be published in a newspaper of general circulation. So what we're proposing to you tonight is consideration of the Metro News as a newspaper of general circulation. The way that the resolution is worded is it would not preempt us or prevent the city from publishing in three public places if that was more appropriate and it would not prevent the city from selecting another newspaper of general circulation should the Metro either be non-responsive or become impractical for the city to use the Metro News. The reason the Metro News was recommended was, was really twofold. First and foremost, the government code requires that when we do not have a newspaper of general circulation, as is the case now in Campbell, that we publish in a newspaper that is nearest the city. And so in order to determine that, the city attorney obtained the attachment that's included in the report that is Attachment C in your packet that lists all the newspapers that the courts, Santa Clara County, have adjudicated as newspapers of general circulation and meeting the requirement for the city. And the second requirement is proximity. So we did a, using our computer systems and mapping tools, determined that the Metro News and the San Jose, the San Jose Post was both 3.7 miles from the city boundaries. The other newspapers were further distant. And so from those that were nearest the city, we looked at the cost differential between the Metro News and the, and the San Jose Post and determined that the, the Metro appeared to be slightly cheaper. The published rates that is in Attachment C were rates that were given to us by Santa Clara County Courts. We've reached out to both the Metro News and the San Jose Post to understand their rates. And as they both explained to our city clerk, the rates that are published in Attachment C are rates for specific sorts of notices. And so we have provided both the Metro and the Post some samples. I think the city clerk can address us if there's questions. We've provided samples of recent publications and got quotes for those publications and the city clerk can give you the range of those costs. But I think that they're consistent, that the Metro is slightly cheaper in that case. The only other thing I wanted to point out is the timing of the publication. Metro publishes once a week and so the, the city would have to meet the publication requirements to get on that weekly publication. That's very similar to how we've been used to dealing with the Campbell Express. However, the, the benefit to the San Jose Post record is that they do publish five days a week and they have a three-day deadline, not a one-week deadline. So it would allow some flexibility in posting. However, staff didn't feel that was critical because as I said, staff is already used to posting, publishing one week in advance with, with the Campbell Express. So it's staff's recommendation, the council consider the Metro. I believe the city clerk has also reached out to them and got figures on their circulation, if the council's interested, on the circulation. My understanding is the Metro does have a larger circulation in Campbell, with Campbell residents than does the San Jose Post. But the clerk has those numbers, if the council's interested, she could provide those as well. With that, we are available for questions if the council has them.
Okay, I see Rich raising his hand.
Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
So maybe you had just said that, but I remember we talked, not everything needs to go in the paper, right? Only certain things. Okay, so the savings we're quoting here is, you said, in publicizing, by saving the save approximately 20,000, yada, yada, is because we're not going to post everything or just because they're cheap?
I think that's primarily based on them being cheaper. There could be additional cost savings if we do the publication in three public places. The question did come up from council members of whether or not this resolution should delineate where those three public places are. And I believe your city attorney can address that. But as my understanding leads me to believe that we're not required to, to publish those three places in a resolution, there's probably some public transparency and benefit to do that. So if that's the pleasure of the council, we can modify this resolution at a future date to add those or come back with a separate resolution to list those three public places that we would post.
I would think two of them are probably going to be pretty obvious with City Hall and the community centers. It's just probably the third one.
Library.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, Ann, do you have questions or com, questions first?
I did have a question about the circulation of the Metro.
I answered that for you. For the Metro, their general circulation is about 2,500 normally. Currently, due to the pandemic and everything, it's, it's dropped to about 1,200, but it does have a circulation of 2,500 versus the Post that is primarily online subscribers.
Any more questions, Ann? No? Liz, do you have questions? Paul, actually, Paul's next.
No, Councilmember Waterman asked the question I was going to ask.
Okay, Liz?
So I, I've never heard of the San Jose Post record, so that was a concern to me. The Metro on the circulation, and I don't know if the acting city clerk has this information, is a difference between circulation and subscription. Circulation is typically the number of newspapers they publish and then they put them around in places like the library or City Hall. Were you able to get anything that actually identified subscriptions so we actually know where they're going?
We, we did not look into that information for the Metro.
Okay. As I said, I haven't seen, and it could be the COVID situation, but I don't remember seeing a Metro in City Hall in the free racks for quite some time. So I'm very concerned that these are not going to really be up to the task of reaching our community members. So I understand we are where we are, but I'm not comfortable that we're going to end up here. The other thing is if, and if I read the resolution correctly, if the Campbell Express gets bought and reactivated, we can also revert back to that. Or if we find that the Metro is not successful, we can switch to the Mercury News without having to change resolutions.
That's correct, Brian.
That, yeah, if I can, I'll, I'll jump in on that. I don't know, it, there is some question as to whether we could go to the Mercury News since the office is a tenth of a mile further away and we're supposed to go with the newspaper that is published nearest to the city, which the next one would be the Post record if you go by the office location.
So circulation has nothing to do with its ability to reach the bell book? I mean, one of the things about the Campbell Express always was that it had, you know, like 5,000 or 6,000 circulation in Campbell. So we knew it was getting into Campbell and, but, or subscriptions and then their circulation was 8,000 or 9,000.
Those factors go into the adjudication of the newspaper. Once it is adjudicated, then we are bound to go with, if there is a newspaper in our jurisdiction with the newspaper in our jurisdiction that has been adjudicated as a newspaper of general circulation. If there is not one in our jurisdiction, we are supposed to go with the newspaper published nearest to our. we are supposed to go with the newspaper published nearest to our jurisdiction that has been adjudicated as a newspaper of general circulation.
And these are all laws from the sounds of it.
Yes.
Is there nothing to speak to online newspaper or anything like that?
There is nothing like that in the statutes currently.
Okay.
We'll have to give that to Evan's Christmas tree list.
If I can add, Madam Mayor, a little bit?
No. You asked, go ahead.
Okay, I'll hold my comments.
No, go ahead. I was giving you.
I will say that the San Jose Post is primarily an online publication. There is some circulation there. But Andrea, can you delineate for us who they publish for?
So the Post Record publishes all legal notices for the city of San Jose and the city of Mountain View. And then Santa Clara, Morgan Hill, Los Gatos, Saratoga, they publish for them on occasion. But the other two are their notices are solely published through the Post Record.
And I do know that if you're a new DBA, you have to post. The Post Record is one used a lot by new businesses for posting. It does tend to be more of a legal notification-type publication than the Mercury News, which has editorials and articles. I think it's kind of unfortunate after 30 years that the Campbell Express is not publishing. It's really sad. That's a great, dear-to-my-heart publication. They've worked with us for so long. They've led, we've had the articles, like the Heritage Houses, the tours, the what's performance-wise, and it's unfortunate. So we have to do what we need to do. Rich, you're raising your hand.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we're not looking at the other side. I mean, the reality with the Campbell Express, some people read it. I mean, you can't just talk circulation and who grabs it from the rack or something. But the amount of people that were reading it was so miniscule, small. It's just reality of you get through the first page and might say something happened in your neighborhood. But by the time you get to the back and it's talking about announcements, it's just, I mean, I can't recall even ever looking at it saying something. So we, I mean, we got to deal with reality. And to me, it's such a trivial, let's find the cheapest solution out there that passes the law and move forward. To mourn the depth of these kind of local papers is just.
I know, but I had to put a plug in.
I know. Yeah, the flip side is we're not looking at the other side is I know not everybody has email and I know this and that. But, you know, we should be building up our own electronic list of people that are interested in this info. And maybe it's only a couple thousand people out of a city of 40,000, but that's 2,000 people are very interested in hearing our info. And then the rest, we just post where we need to post it. You know, I understand we have to do it for certain stuff and let's do it. But let's not spend a lot of time or money trying to do.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
I have a comment to me.
Ann, you have a comment?
Yes. So the city manager mentioned that the resolution does not include the identification of three public sites where we could be posting when the statute allows for that. And I know that the statute doesn't require that to be in the resolution. But I would ask for the council's consideration that we do identify three public sites where we will be posting in the event we are able to do that, so that there is full transparency. And I would recommend or suggest that we do it or ask that we amend this resolution tonight rather than have to bring it back for to amend the resolution. And the three sites that came to mind would be the library, the City Hall, and the community center.
I support that.
I do too.
Liz, are you asking a question or responding?
I was just going to say that the City Hall and the library are awfully close together, but I suppose it's where public would go that's really relevant. Do we have a posting board at the community center?
Yes.
Yes.
We do.
And the other option would be to post on the, with the city website, there'll be an option for an option for public notice?
The posting has to be in a physical location.
Okay, well, it just, it seems a little too insular to the downtown. We don't get out to our community much. So I would like to have seen something broader.
We don't have any other public places to post. We don't have any other business or any other property to post that.
One other thought, if I'm in, one of the thoughts could be, and those three public places are fine with me, but one of the thoughts we had discussed was whether or not at some of our parks we could install a posting board that would look classy, at least in post, whether it's Jack Fisher or Stoyanovich or some of those other parks, we could do that too as an alternative. But I think the three locations that were mentioned right now are easy. They're existing locations that we could take care of right here this evening. And the future, we could always look at these places.
Rich?
Yeah, so just, Brian, on this motion where we're saying designating Metro News, I mean, is way to say Metro News, but just to the minimum, only when we're required to post something, which is that small subset election.
Yeah, it's only when we're required to do it in a physical paper.
Normally.
Not posting everything.
This council meetings and stuff doesn't get posted there, right?
It hasn't been in the past, right?
That's correct. This resolution wouldn't commit you to do all postings with the Metro, just those that were legally required to be published in a newspaper of general circulation.
So the posting stays the same as it was with the Campbell Express, the same amount of posting and the same topics are, that part has not changed.
Well, we would reduce the number of postings in the newspaper probably greater than what we anticipated in our fiscal analysis because our previous resolution required that all of our postings be done in the Campbell Express. So this would open it up and allow us to choose a cheaper route, which would be physical posting where possible. And we would do that, which would reduce costs even more.
Great. Well. Rich, any more comments?
No, I like it. Can you make a motion here then?
Liz was raising her hand here.
So I'll just offer this. I don't think our cheapest solution is necessarily the most transparent and appropriate solution. The purpose of this is to communicate to the public and our residents. So I just, I just don't want us to make a decision to not post things just because it'll save us a few dollars here and there. Our purpose is to communicate to our residents. So I would just offer that as something I, I think we need to err on the side of transparency rather than saving relatively small amounts of money.
Rich?
Yeah, I mean, I, so to be as transparent and to get out to the most people in this day and age, yeah, we have to do a throwaway paper and let's do it. But that's not how most people are advertising. Most of us who've run for office don't put an ad in the Campbell Express. We go and, you know, email, social media, maybe there's, there's. The city should be sending out, forgetting what the rolls say. Electronically, people should be able to say, I'm interested in this type of information. Please email with me. Here's my email.
No, I don't disagree.
We do, we do have that, Rich.
I don't think we aggressively, I know we do, but I don't think we aggressively pursue it. I don't think people want it. So I would like to see us more aggressive to say to people, hey, if you're interested in subject A, B, or C, here's where you sign up. Because I, you know, just putting it on a website, again, that's a that's not a technology where people just happen to pick up Tuesday, go on my own website. You need to advertise a bit more. I mean, that's much more important than some throwaway paper.
Okay, is Ann raising her hand?
Just, yes, my comment is that the reality of this is that it's really to fulfill a requirement of the government code that has been a longstanding rule and it really is antiquated. And there aren't a lot of options today with newspapers. And I know that a few years ago, I, when Senator Smithian was Senator, I tried to, I asked him to try and pass a law that would, would you know, change it so that we didn't have to publish. And at that time, he, there was no traction. But maybe it's time to talk to our legislators and ask them to bring it forward.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick comment, I'm actually amazed of all the things we've done tonight. This is the most discussion for.
I agree.
That's a great comment, Paul.
The council member, Bybee, is spot on. I mean, first of all, we have to do this because we have no choice with the express. I think staff has picked a great option. And we have the option to not publish in the paper when we, when we can avoid it. I'd like to move forward. I think, I think Councilman Bybee had a good, had a good motion because you added in some additional verbiage to what's in the report.
So are you making a motion, Paul?
Well, I, I'll make the motion. I mean, I think if I heard it right, let me, let me pull the up. If I heard it right, it was to adopt a resolution designating the Metro News as a newspaper of general circulation for use by the city of Campbell. Remember right, also identifying the three other sites and post in lieu of putting it in the newspaper when allowed by the appropriate statute.
And designating the City Hall, the library, and the community center.
Possibly some parks.
Do we have a second?
Except that and even allow, and even say or other areas to, you know, future areas that we find to be appropriate.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Rich, oh, okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman.
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov. Vice Mayor Gibbons.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye, that motion passes. So before we go to community, council committee reports, our city attorney, Bill, needs to announce an action on a claim that was discussed during the closed session meeting tonight. Bill, can you make a report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Landry, members of the council. You will recall an executive session tonight. You considered some actions with regard to the claim of Christian Bond Scott. The actions to be announced are that the council voted to deny the claim by unanimous vote and also to authorize retention of outside counsel.
Great, thank you. So our last item is to have any committee reports. Let's start in order of voting, Rich. No, nothing. Ann?
Yes, I attended the DPA PAC meeting last week.
Anything come out of it, anything exciting?
No, it was actually a lot of doom and gloom with their budget situation and their lack of fares and budgetary situation right now.
Is the opening, the BART still on schedule?
We didn't really get into the BART.
Just kidding, all right.
They did it today.
Paul? Yeah, I do, actually. So busy, busy two weeks. I checked meetings at West Valley Clean Water, JPA, West Valley Solid Waste, JPA, and West Valley Sanitation District. We'll get back to solid waste in a second, also Cities Association. So it was that period where they all came together. Just a heads up that it is likely we have a special meeting coming up on solid waste. It is likely the rates are going to increase somewhat significantly, about $4 a month. And let me explain why. I mean, this is a real dilemma. We have two things hitting us at the same time. One of them is SB 1383, which calls for a 50% reduction in organic waste by 2022, I think it is. Todd, if I missed that, if he's still there. And that is versus 2014 level. So that's going to require a lot of enforcement, a lot of education to the public. And the way it's set up, if the city doesn't implement it properly and put in motion the steps to get the businesses in particular to comply, the city is the one who gets fined. And if the city gets fined, it's likely that the rates that we get for the penalty we get fined is going to exceed the amount that we're raising by the rate increase. It's not a good idea not to comply. So that's, but that's the minor part of it. The bigger part is, we've talked about this before, the entire recycling world has turned upside down in the last two years. So to put it in this most succinct way, it used to be that the collection company, West Valley Collection, would sort the recycling and sell it to the recycler for $40 a ton. They now have to pay the recycler to take it. Minimum cost, $40 a ton. It's flipped. And the reason it's flipped is we used to send all this stuff to China and China took it all. And then China got real strict on what they would take in their contamination levels. So we moved it all to Malaysia, India, and stuff like that, and they got stripped. So now what happens is nobody wants it. So the recyclers who were shipping it overseas were actually losing money in buying it. So now they, now they get paid to get rid of it with the fear that if their recycling is contaminated and gets rejected, they pay ship to take it out and then they have to pay to bring it back. So the only thing we can do to keep that would be West Valley Recycling or any collector goes to the state and says they need an emergency allowance to go to landfill instead of recycling. They just can't recycle anymore. That would mean that all recycling went to the landfill, which would then probably get us an increase from the landfill and it also caused more trucks. It's just a nasty scenario where the, where what used to be a revenue generator for the collectors is now a major cost. And we have no choice other than not recycling to then find that money. So it's a nasty increase. We've been going, looking at this for over a year. There's probably nowhere around it. And lastly, our JPA is Campbell, Los Gatos, Monta, Monta Serrano, and Saratoga. We're all going to take that hit.
Wow.
Alternatives are terrible and not even legal. So just a heads up, this will probably go into effect in, you know, with the July fiscal year.
And I do know, I was going to report on the same bill, the 1383. The county has finalized all comments. The comment period is closed, I think, as of today. So it looks like it's going forward as it's been written. And the enforcement, we're on the hook for the enforcement on that.
And just to let you know, in that whole big thing there, if we talked about potentially using reserves to pay for 1383 and then increasing the rate over, say, three years to get the rates back into the reserves, we'd be talking about 40 cents a month savings. It's like 10% of what we're talking about. It's the recycling part that's killing us. And there's some thought at 360 or 4, if you're going to pay it anyway, you bite the bullet now and you pay it and then you move forward. And there's nothing we can do. This is legislation and this is a total upheaval in recycling.
And this is going to come back to us here shortly, Paul?
This doesn't come to us, so the JPA will vote on this at the end of May in a special meeting. We postponed it because we wanted to bring some of the issues back to staff to understand the impact and who's paying and all that. But the reality is, I'm anticipating it'll pass because there really is no alternative other than recycling. And I suspect that nobody wants that alternative, even if they're.
Great.
Too much money.
Thanks for the update, Liz.
Thanks. So may I have my slides, please? See which ones come up first? So answering Councilmember Waterman's question about where the money's coming from, since from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. The mission statement, this strategic plan for Silicon Valley Clean Energy is decarbonization of the environment. And we've been doing that in addition to buying 100% carbon-free power and 100% renewable power. We've also been charging customers less than, 4% less than PG&E. And it would be even less than that if PG&E didn't have legislation saying that we have to pay them, sort of like the garbage stuff. But as a result, money has been set aside annually and there is money. And we're going to take a hit on the margin of the corporation to provide the $10 million as relief funds. And there's two customer relief programs. One is anyone who's on a care of FARA customer billing will get $100 credit automatically on their bills over the next two months, $50 a month. Any small business will get a letter asking them if they would like to apply for a $250 credit on. for a $250 credit on their bill. The second program is the workforce release, which is world in California and elsewhere changes to electrification as relating to all our all-electric building code efforts or reach codes. There is a need to train, um, the workforce. So there will be a, uh, online class, uh, professional classes run probably by one of the community colleges. And with the certificate of completion, um, people will be getting a $500 credit for their time and effort. And in addition, if they choose to implement some of their training, such as putting in an electric, uh, heat pump, hot water heater, or an electric furnace, also be given a stipend to do that work in their own homes. The third program, which I mentioned briefly, um, earlier, is that, um, communities, um, all cities, all of our cities, um, have to be planning for resiliency. And that's not totally COVID-related certainly, but it's, um, uh, PSPS, the power shut offs that we know are continuing to happen. So, um, we've come up with $5 million to be distributed across all of the cities. There will be some planning support and each city will get an allocation, Campbell's allocation based on consumption load. It would probably be about 150,000, more than that. The total value to Campbell is about half a million dollars. Uh, next slide. Okay, so that just says that. Go ahead. I think there's one more. I don't know if you were able to open the, oh, the, open the, um, link. So that's what's been going on with Silicon Valley Clean Energy. The other meeting that I've had is on, um, the ABAG meeting. There's a meeting this coming Thursday. That's okay. We can skip that slide, Cecil. Thank you. The, uh, big thing to take note is that, um, the regional growth forecast for the Plan 2040, um, staff has been, um, advised about, um, the changes, uh, and plans. And the big deal is that Campbell, um, has 30, 3,840 acres, um, in its boundaries. 2,621 acres are defined by, um, MTC as being, uh, planned development areas, PDA's. And it is likely that they will be labeled as such, um, when they do the RENA number allocations. And, uh, the city will not get any, uh, money for those if we don't self-declare. Our current area is 265 acres and we are obliged to come up with 50%, which would be 1,310 acres. So there's, um, a lot going on there that could come down to, uh, be problematic, um, for Campbell as the next RENA cycle comes in. Because of COVID, um, there was a request, uh, that has gone into the, um, the state, extended the RENA housing, um, and the Plan 2050 and the housing element deadline by one month from, uh, ju- December 2022 to January 2023. I think I've got my years right. There is a request going in from, um, ABAG MTC to the governor requesting a one-year extension, given that, uh, most cities are expecting, um, staffing reductions and will not have the ability to properly respond to that. The next big item is Assembly Bill 1487, which is the one that is mandating, um, that cities and counties, all nine Bay Area counties, put a bond measure on the ballot. It's currently proposed for $35 per 100,000 assessed value. That's going to be discussed on, um, Thursday. We suspect that the polling numbers will come in not supportive of that, but we still want to make sure, um, we understand if there's going to be a big effort, um, to try, and you've all received notices from the community, um, trying to get, uh, support, um, for that to go on the November ballot. So if you are hearing things, that's what it's about and you may hear a lot more, um, Thursday. The last thing I wanted to mention was, um, uh, requesting a legislative subcommittee meeting.
Okay, I don't, you guys can just set that meeting up. You, we just need to do the noticing.
Okay.
All right. So thank you. Um, let's see, I have several to report. From the biggest picture, the United States Conference of Mayors, which is mayors all over the country, has been very actively polling all the cities, asking them where they're at with supplies. Has there been a food supply shortage? Have, do we have enough PP&amp;E? They've also been, um, really trying to focus on this next bill coming out of the government about funding for local, uh, cities. Uh, so I've been participating in their surveys and emails. Uh, I think I mentioned two weeks ago that 15 mayors in the Bay Area and the Santa Clara County, uh, wrote a letter to the county regarding testing and contract case, ta- testing, I'm sorry. And that has been a lot of the emphasis in the county phone calls lately is this kickoff and starting of, I think it's 500 people have already, um, been brought on for the contact tick tracing. We have, I think twice a week, the county, uh, has elected official calls. We get an update from the health officer on how we're doing. Like I mentioned in the beginning, they did, um, relax the rules on retail businesses and hopefully on our call tomorrow, we may get more good news. The chief of police and I participated on Wednesday through the Santa Mosquinno Neighborhood Association. We had a live stream Teletown. Uh, I think the numbers in the end, we had 78 people listening, which I thought was wonderful, more than our council meetings. The last item is the Chamber of Commerce. Hope you've been noticing orange ribbons and bows around the trees and poles in the city. Their, the ribbons are for recovery, are a, um, the orange ribbons are meant to serve as a symbolic visual sign of support for the recovery of local businesses, organizations, and residents that are impacted by the COVID pandemic. Anybody that's interested for $25, you can get 25 ribbons. Their goal is to try to cover as much of Campbell as possible. And as of, I think yesterday, they were several hundred dollars into this and different neighborhood groups were buying them. Um, I've been out passing out ribbons and bows. So it's a good visual sign that we are on a road to recovery. Uh, and as a reminder to everybody that we are, as a community, working together. So if nothing else, the, we'll adjourn this meeting. See, there's my little gavel here. Thank you all. Good night.
Night.
Night off.
Night off.